Okay, good evening, everyone. City Council, the city attorney and the city manager. Nice to see you. We're here for we're here for closed session conference with legal counsel initiation of litigation government code, health and safety code five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D, four. And is there any public comment tonight? Not seeing or hearing anybody jump up.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom? Well, let's move to closed session.
Are you moving?
You know what? We didn't have the door open.
Thank you. Acceptance of agenda and urgency. Move to accept agenda as posted or move to add or delete items.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as posted.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, opposed, the motion carries. Consent agenda. I'll put my glasses on for this. The consent, the following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member may request that any item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under the regular agenda. Removed items will be considered following the consent calendar portion of this agenda. Consent agenda A wave reading except by title of ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per government code section three, six, nine, three, four. B approve minutes of the city council regular meeting for February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four and the special meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. C approve application for two thousand and twenty-four dash zero, zero, eight with staff recommendations for reserved parking on Forbes Street for the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four election. They adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lakeport amending section two point one, zero point one, one, zero of chapter two point one, zero of title two of the Lakeport municipal code to authorize the city manager to sign written contracts and conveyances and have design approval and authority. Would would anybody like to pull? Would anybody from the council like to pull any of these items for further discussion? Not hearing that. Would anybody in the public like to pull any of these items for further discussion? Danny, which item would you like to pull? C? Okay.
So the technically only the council can pull items, but if the mayor or if somebody else wants to pull an item based on public feedback, that's fine, but just please let us know which.
I'll approve pulling that for Danny so that he can speak on that. So can I have a motion on the other three?
Public comment on the remainders as well.
Pardon?
You'll need to get public comment on the remaining consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And we can take public comment without pulling the item.
Correct. That is correct.
So if you want to just let Danny come up and give his public comment, then one of us can decide if we want to pull the item and discuss it.
Okay. Danny, would you like to come forward?
Danny Wind, I'll be back for another agenda item later, but I just wanted to mention that on item C, I'm in support of approval, but there's debris and overgrowth on the western sidewalk there on what they're requesting. I just noticed because I walk by very often and that there's overgrowth on that sidewalk there. And so just thinking about the voters that are coming, coming in that day and having a clear sidewalk. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Danny. All right, then Stacy, we can move forward with all four of them. Can I get a motion from somebody?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if there's nothing further.
We want to make sure we've got public comment from Danny Wind as well.
Wind.
I just was wondering if there was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody online now?
There's a couple of participants online, but I'm seeing no hands raised for this item.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, with nothing further, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. The motion carries. Public presentations and requests, public input. I'm looking for Michael Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Just very quickly, not wearing my supervisor hat today, wearing my Lakeport Yacht Club hat. And just wanted to share, yes, some challenges going on. Storm two weeks ago blew out the Marine at fourteen hundred South Main Street. Several of our club members had boats affected. In this most recent storm, boats are still getting moved around. It's kind of interesting. So one of our club members does have a boat down at one of the Fifth Street docks. We do have plans to assist him to get off of there. But it's, we have another club member kind of taking sanctuary at one of our other buoys. So I wanted to share that there are boats in play and we're trying to work through it as best we can in support of our club members and also those others that might be impacted. As far as the building itself, I did want to share just in the spirit of transparency. We're not accepting rentals at this time as we look at some maintenance issues with the building itself. I appreciate everyone that's been out and kind of taken a look at it. We had Kevin out there last week and a couple of other people. So I don't have a firm timeline. Some of it is honeydew list stuff. Some of it is more substantive. And I have a couple more people coming out to look at some things. So I just wanted to share that. Thank city staff for their patience with our bobbing boats. And as soon as I get a firmer timeline or a firmer plan of what's going to go on with the actual club operations, I'll certainly reach out to you. In the meantime, if you guys have any questions or anybody in the public has any questions, the club cell phone number is seven oh, seven, two, six, three, five, zero, seven, eight. And so if anybody wants to reach out individually, I'll certainly show you what's going on as best I know and also share what I don't know, which is a lot at this.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else for public comment? Danny, did you want to make public comment on this tonight? It's on a specific item that's already on the agenda tonight. Okay, thank you. Okay, not seeing anybody else for public comment. Do we have anybody online?
Seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. We're going to bring it back to, we're going to close public comment. Thank you. Public input. We're moving along to council business. Item number six, traffic safety update. Receive and file the traffic safety related complaints report. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. I'll start this off, but I'm sure that both Ron and and Chief Rasmussen will want to add some additional items on it. As you've become aware, you know, we're kind of beginning several years back now. We've been kind of tracking traffic complaints as they come in and then doing periodic reviews with your city council. Kind of giving an update on, you know, what action. Most of the complaints that come in are pretty routine in nature that we can generally get to right away, you know, if a a sign is missing or damaged or, you know, if some of the ones that you see here referenced are, you know, missing paint or faded paint at a bus stop or things like that, we've been able to kind of hit those items in there. You know, generally we use these complaints to kind of inform and track trends. If there's, you know, different things that we need to do, yeah, get together, I think some of the ones that have come up in the past of the need for greater and enhanced crossing features throughout the city and, you know, strategic locations. That's informed, you know, kind of our, our project alignment. And as you'll see, the second half of this report does go into the various upcoming traffic safety projects that we have where you see we're adding a lot more enhanced sidewalks, ADA curb and ramps to projects as we go along the big, the biggies being Eleventh Street, Lakeport Boulevard and Main Street. This particular period of reference, I think the last report we gave to your council was in September of two thousand and twenty-three. We only had, I mean, a limited number of complaints, I think seven. Most of them were easily resolved. I think the one notable traffic safety issue during this period is the issue of wrong way driving down the, the one-way segment that is High Street located between Eleventh and Clear Lake Avenue. This has been one that your council has been brought to attention in the past. It kind of plays into the larger one that we've discussed at length as well, the kind of Main Street, Clear Lake Avenue, High Street, a kind of, I call it the snake that kind of allows primary north, south access down. This section of roadway plays into that. It's a one-way segment allowing traffic along Eleventh Street to access that corridor. And then it doesn't go down to Forbes or Main Street and add to the, the traffic pieces through there. We have received several complaints regarding vehicles traveling the wrong way down that segment of roadway. Complaintant who's here, I'm sure she'll speak to it as well, has provided us with documentation showing, you know, that this is a regular occurrence. We did take some mitigation measures. I don't know, a few months back where we, we moved the do not enter sign that's on the, the High Street facing section to a more prominent location. We did post a, a camera up there. It was a game camera that wasn't, it wasn't designed for what we were using it for, so it was very difficult to, to go through all the video evidence. We did note, you know, one or two occasions where vehicles were traveling the wrong way. It appeared that they were folks that lived on the street. But, I mean, we have documentation showing that this is a regular occurrence. The, the piece that we kind of have is that we're kind of stuck at, you know, in, in impasse as far as having readily available, kind of easy, you know, off the shelf cheap solutions for this. At this point, we've come to the conclusion that any change on this area is going to take a little bit more your design effort and likely, you know, some greater capital improvement, you know, sort of project effort. It's staff's opinion that this is more of an enforcement issue. And we are getting to a point now where our, where our police staff is going to be fully in force here and will be able to utilize them in some greater parking enforcement efforts, not just at this location. But I mean, we do receive complaints, you know, from, you know, intersections, people not stopping at stop signs or speeding complaints and pieces like that. So we feel like that this is best handled through that enforcement aspect. The complainant did make some suggestions on some possible improvements that, that could be considered to kind of mitigate these issues. Those include retractable spike strips or the possible closure of the block. I know, and we, we did get some follow-up conversation with council member Costa asking for some additional detail in regards to what those measures would actually be and what they would cost. And I know that, that Ron has done some research on that, that we can, we can talk about some of those measures in some more detail if your council wishes. I will note that one of the items that we've been pushing for was in regards to, you know, seeking grant funding or message board slash speed trailer to replace one that we had and used several years back. We do actually have an active grant application in, in play for that. So we're hoping that that's going to be something that we're going to have at our disposal as well. That wouldn't, that would be a tool that could be added to this particular issue as well, but it could also be used throughout, throughout different areas of the city. But overall, I think that's kind of a synopsis of it. We can certainly dig deeper into the one-way segment and we can absolutely answer any questions that your council may have in regards to any of the upcoming traffic safety projects. I do believe that Mr. Danny Wind did submit comments that, written comments that you guys have there in regards to some of these projects as well. Some of them are, you know, asking for additional features to be considered as we talk through them. So I'll turn it over to council at this point. And if you want to dig into any of those items a little deeper, I'm sure Ron and Brad can add a little bit more in into there, but I'll turn it back to the council for questions.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the thought of closing that street down, you know, I live on Eleventh and for fifty-five years I've been dying to just drive through there once, you know, just to say I did it. But when I heard the closing the street off, has anybody done a traffic count going, you know, in the proper direction? And I mean, I know when I hear these traffic numbers, they're like enormous. And I'm just curious if, if that's been done ever. Because I, I mean, if it was closed, you know, I would go down to the, you know, where you would normally have to go when you're going the other direction and make the corner and, oh my God, it must be, you know, like an eighth of a mile out of my way. But the thought of that being closed is not really that big a deal, but I have no idea how many people just shoot through. They're going in proper direction. And then it's always a situation because you have the oncoming traffic and then you have to wait and then they're also coming around the corner. You know, that it's, it's not really a crazy idea that if it was foreclosed, it wouldn't be a big thing until, you know, later on, unless there's like five thousand people going through there a day. I have no idea. That's just my comment as someone that lives on Eleventh and has been through there and around there for fifty years.
Yeah, we, we looked at a couple of things. We, we looked a little bit at the retractable strips that, that Ron can talk to a little bit about there. We looked at what would be involved in regards to the closure of that roadway there. And then we also looked at, slightly at speed bumps. But then the last one was really if you converted it to two-way traffic. And each of those has a whole litany of, of items that I don't know that they physically solve the issue at hand. And some of them I think would aggravate other, other items on there. So I mean, we can go through, if, if it's council's desire, it might be informative to just go through those pieces now to kind of inform the debate and, 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 you know, for, and public comment before as well. I, I don't know if that's the, the council's.
It's, it's just, I was just, was throwing it out as if anybody knew the volume of traffic going through that street on any given day. Is it, you know, like a hundred? Is it like a thousand or is it like ten? I mean, I have no idea.
It's more when the schools are in session for sure.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine.
There is not data on that one-way section of North High. There is however, a pretty current study on High Street between Clear Lake Avenue and Twentieth that lists seven thousand, two hundred and fifty vehicles per day on High Street between Clear Lake Avenue and Twentieth. And regarding dead ending that street, the first major hurdle that you would bump into would be there's a regulation that would require a forty-foot radius turnaround at a dead end street.
Never mind.
And that would be the first hurdle to get over. The second thing to consider there on the dead end, even if we wanted to make a hammerhead, a forty-foot hammerhead or turn it into a cul-de-sac style, it would increase the traffic to Forbes and Eleventh, which is the highest accident intersection in the city. And I think it would just exacerbate an already high accident intersection. The spike strips, traffic control devices are controlled by MUTCD, the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And any sort of spike strip in a road would not be in compliance with anything that MUTCD has published. So I, I don't think we would consider putting something that was out of compliance with MUTCD. That's, we follow that for our street markings, our street signs, our cones, our barricades, everything follow MUTCD standards. And I mean, there's good liability reasons to follow MUTCD. And so that would be the challenges with the dead end or a spike strip as.
Opening it up to two-way traffic also, we, we looked at and present some issues you would. One, it's not clear whether there's enough room there to allow two-way traffic and parking.
It's clear that there is not.
There's not. There you go. The other, the other issue is you would be creating a kind of a dangerous left-hand, a blind left-hand turn issue there for vehicles traveling west and then ultimately north along Clear Lake Avenue and High Street. You know, that they would, you know, they, even if you mark it, we know that this becomes an issue. It's one that reoccurs. In this report, we have the same issue going the opposite way onto North Main with people turning left, you know, traveling, you know, along going down to, going down to Main Street and then turning left. And we have that clearly marked on the road and stuff, but yet we still continue to have, you know, complaints received about folks turning left there. So you'd be creating another intersection hazard at that, at that other side.
Let me interrupt just for a second. I want to apologize. It says here that all of these were deemed impractical. And I knew there was many, many, many reasons. I just asked that one question. It seemed kind of innocuous. And obviously this, you have done your due diligence and I apologize for asking that insensitive question.
These, these are, these are pieces. I mean, and this is not to, not to state that this issue doesn't occur. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think anybody's arguing that there aren't vehicles that are traveling the wrong way down the strip. It's just, it's just not an easy one, easy one to fix. The Eleventh Street corridor study does talk about, you know, an eventual kind of smaller roundabout at Eleventh and, and Forbes, recognizing that that is the most hazardous intersection that we do have in the city. That's where our highest level of accident rates occur. If you had a roundabout in there, then I mean, you know, might be something at that point that you could consider how you would handle this, you know, because you'd be feeding it into a much safer intersection. But, you know, once again, that's, that's not an overnight endeavor. And it comes with a, with a pretty hefty price tag in there as well. So I mean, we did, we did take a look at all of these options and then I, I think the only one we didn't cover was speed bumps, which are also. I, one, you know, the fire chief isn't here, but he doesn't like them. I mean, I can tell you that right now. And then we do experience complaints with speed bump usage because, you know, you start to get grinding. You get other noises and other things. And then you get people who drive off the roadway to get around them and pieces. And I'm not sure that that would really, you know, somebody, yes, it would make an, an extra barrier. You know, and, you know, someone might consider, oh, it's really not worth the four seconds that I lose by going and making two more rights onto Forbes. But, you know, this is a heavily used stretch of roadway. As someone who travels it frequently to get to the schools, this is, this is a critical piece to our north-south connection in town. Like it or not, I, I would not say it's the, a great option. I think our whole north-south section of traffic in this area is, is hindered as we've, we've looked at in, in different areas. But this is, this is a piece of that puzzle. So I mean, this is what's brought me back and staff back too. This really does become more of an enforcement related issue. You know, among other areas, we get several complaints about, you know, speeding in different sections and, you know, missed stop signs frequently occur here at Third and Main. So I mean, I think as we ramp up our staffing, this gets put on the list where we have a more active enforcement related. I mean, that at this point is, is staff's recommendation.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I have some questions and comments, probably all kind of mushed together. And I am interested. It sounds like you, you noted there's somebody from the public that, and I'm looking forward to that because I think that's going to be valuable to hear. So I don't think this is exactly a rhetorical question, but here's the thing. I wonder why was this put in place to begin with? And have we solved the problem that we attempted to solve? Is this one-way travel actually, did it actually bring something that we needed? Or has it just sort of outlived its, its time? I like the idea. If we have enough officers enforcement, that sounds good. I think for a while, maybe that just was not possible. And so what, what I find uncomfortable is, well, we just have an unsolvable problem. And we've got people going the wrong way, which I think can be inherently dangerous because they have to go around that fence to go down the wrong way. And so if someone's coming the right way, now you've got two cars in the same spot. And I don't want to make assumptions, but I, I drove down there today and there's, there might be about six houses, maybe, that can call High Street their, their name. But that's because we've created that, like the city created this one block that's one way. And so the residents that are on that block are the people who are day-to-day going to be maybe most impacted or have the most concern because they're watching this happen more than anybody else. And so I wouldn't, to me, it's important if even one out of six is coming in and describing the problem. I, I think that's, I'm glad that we're looking at it because I think that's really important. When we're coming down Eleventh from Safeway, there are four other streets that people can turn on from Eleventh to Clear Lake Avenue and then come down Clear Lake Avenue and then go left onto High Street.
I don't, they can't turn left on Clear Lake Avenue, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah.
From the barricade side?
I tried it out to say it was how this, and, you know, and turning left on Clear Lake Avenue doesn't seem to be, now, when the whole traffic after school, I'll have to run another experiment. That might make things all different. But turning left on Clear Lake Avenue, I, I don't think coming straight across on High Street is a piece of cake either going down Clear Lake Avenue. So I don't know that the one-way traffic, I'm trying to picture just exactly what it helped. Now to the point, maybe this street is significantly smaller than the other streets. Tunis Brush, North Pool, because those are all two-way streets that go from Eleventh to Clear Lake Avenue. So I don't know that people coming from the freeway, for example, have to wait to turn on Forbes and then go back up to go to Clear Lake Avenue. I mean, I think there are other ways for people to navigate that. So to me, it just comes down to like, I don't really know yet what we should do because I'm not sure what problem we tried to solve.
Well, I know, Kim, it's that bend right there because it's the, the only street that doesn't, it, it goes, it keeps going and it turns right there. So if you, if you come down Eleventh, you turn left and you come to the stop sign, that traffic oncoming is, it keeps going. So I'm no traffic engineer, but to me, I see it like that can't just, it can't be another way.
I mean, I guess I'm not picturing because you come down.
The traffic coming towards you automatically turns. It, that thoroughfare keeps going. It's a bend.
Doesn't that happen even if you're on the one-way street going straight? If I'm picturing what you're talking.
I mean, it would, you would have to put a stop sign. So I'm, like I said, but that's the difference that that street keeps going, that doesn't stop it, but it turns.
I'm sorry. I, I don't know that this is, like, I don't know that this is probably not proper that we're having this conversation, but it is helpful information. I'm just not sure that I'm picturing it. I think I'm.
No, yeah, it's proper. I just wanted to point out how it's different from those other blocks.
It turns because, so Clear Lake Avenue goes up and then turns onto High Street, correct? Okay, and High Street going that way, you can't turn. So maybe we've created a turn. I'm not sure. I guess I'm just, again, I'm, if this seems to be something that is a safety issue that can be described by the residents there, I just hope that we can identify something feasible that we can do that will be an intervention rather than saying there's really nothing that we can do.
Well, I'd just like to ask one quick question. Have we considered an ALPR there? And can, can we temporarily move an ALPR there from another spot in the city just to, just to, to see what's going on there?
You mean the, the cross, the, the crossing and enhanced crossing? Or you're, you're, no, you're talking about.
Automated license plate reader. Can we put, can we put one there and put a little bit of lighting over there and maybe a sign that says we're going to find you on the fence?
You can use the ALPR.
I'm with that purpose. I'd have to do some research on that.
I mean, you know, we, we put a camera out there, but it sounded like it was more like a game trail camera. I'm wondering if one of our ALPRs that we have at every inlet and outlet in the city, if that wouldn't be a good use for one.
We wouldn't be able to, I don't believe we'd be able to ticket using them. I mean, you'd be able to observe how many people.
If you can't ticket, then that's not, that's not worth doing.
Yeah, because the problem is those cameras are not going to give us. are not going to give us a picture of a driver that we would need to write a citation.
Okay. So I guess we can't get a, give a citation in the mail to the car that does it? Like when you go over the Golden Gate Bridge and you don't pay your toll?
We have to be able to, on that kind of a violation, identify the driver.
Okay.
To cite the driver.
Darn it. It would have been too.
I mean, there is camera technology that can do that. It's just not part of the ALPR setup.
Would that be something that you could look at for us and bring back?
Probably very expensive.
Yeah, we certainly could look at it.
We don't want to, like, can't, like a council member Parlett just said, we, we don't want to spend a ton of money on this or a ton of time. But I just thought, it just seems like the, the easiest strategy.
Yes, we can. It would be similar to like a red light camera. Yeah. Same, same thing. So we can certainly look into that.
Any other questions from council?
Can I address Councilmember Costa's question?
Yes, please.
So if I was following along, the question is, why was it originally designed as a one-way? And what safety concern did that address? The, the answer to why it was originally designed there, I spent a lot of time trying to figure out and find the original design comments, and it's been a one-way for a very, very, very long time, many, many years. And I couldn't find it. I have talked to the city engineer and other engineers. And the biggest safety concern that that addresses, if we made that a two-way street, North High, it is not, it would require no parking, one side of the street at a minimum to accommodate two-way traffic. At that point, if it was two-way, anyone traveling westbound on Clear Lake Avenue, wishing to turn left onto North High, that was now two-way, they would be turning blind left because of the 90-degree corner. That is the biggest safety issue that the one-way addresses there is eliminating the possibility of making that left turn blind. You can't see the cars that are coming southbound on High as they're making that 90. So you would be turning blind onto there. That's the safety concern that the one-way addresses. There have been other safety measures implemented there. The speed surveys indicate that that portion of North High between Clear Lake and 20th are, it would be adequate to have a 35 mile an hour speed limit there. And there is a difficult process to get a lower speed limit than what has been identified in the speed survey. But it, it's been done on that stretch of high. And so the speed limit is under the recommended 35. It's set at 30. And I went back in crash data for the last 12 years. And I haven't seen or found an instance of a reported crash at that intersection in the last 12 years. So to answer your question, I would say, yes, the safety measures that it was originally designed for have been effective.
So it sounds, it sounds like prior to that, there was some crash data then that, or they were just trying to avoid having any, and we continue to avoid having?
The original design on that is over 50 years ago. So I, I don't know.
My, my best guess is this roots back to the expressway construction there. Cause originally the highway, Highway 29 ran down Main Street and did that snake and ran up to High Street and then out to Lake Shore Boulevard. And when they constructed the expressway, somebody in their infinite wisdom decided 11th Street was the best spot to put the exit. Whereas I think if you look at the plat map of the city, Clear Lake Avenue is far wider than 11th Street. But regardless, that's where we're at, is that I think that that's where this all sort of stems back and develops. That you had a new freeway that came in there and you needed to somehow get that traffic back over to that major north-south connector up High Street and out to Lake Shore Boulevard. And High Street lines up with that, that corridor out. And I think that's where you got that kind of, rather than have them go all the way down to Main or Forbes and then make, you know, two or three additional lefts to get back on. I think that, you know, I, I don't have anything to back, but I, I would imagine that that's all where it sort of stemmed from was when the, the expressway came in through Lakeport, 11th Street became a principal corridor. Because if you look, once you get past Pool Street, 11th Street looks just as narrow as 10th, 9th, 8th, 7th and 6th. It was not originally designed to be a major collector road to connect into that area. So my guess is that that's where a lot of this stuff stemmed directly from. And so it was a means of getting traffic over there to that north-south for folks that are still looking to travel up to, to Lake Shore Boulevard.
Just to follow up. So Ron, I just want to thank you for the time that you took to, to try to. I know I sent some questions to city, the city manager. So thank you for looking into that and bringing this information. And then if I understood the explanation about the concern for the 90 degrees and how it would appear that we have successfully avoided having a crash such as that. And if people are using the one-way road in the opposite direction, are they doing the same behavior that we were worried a two-way road would do? I mean, it sounds like that might be the same, using that road, going, making a left-hand turn onto High Street. If it were a two-way road, that would create a certain danger. It sounds like people are deciding to sign on for that danger anyway, if they're doing that when it's a one-way road.
I don't know. I have not witnessed somebody going the wrong way down there. I don't live over there. I go that way sometimes, but I haven't seen it. I would only assume that if you were going to go the wrong way, you would be traveling south on High and go straight through there. But I guess, yes. The answer to your question would be yes, if there's an irresponsible driver that doesn't pay attention to the vehicle codes, there's no end to the scenarios that that they could commit. I mean, I'm sure Brad and his folks could tell stories all night long about the nonsensical reasoning that people have.
I'll just say amen to that. Thank you.
Council members? Yeah, we're, we're going to open this up to the public. Ruby, would you like to come up and speak on this?
Yes, I would. I live on that one block. My name's Ruby Jones. I live at 1150 North High Street. Lived there for 47 years, not as long as you can. But it's been a one-way street ever since I moved in there. Highway 29 did used to come down and make that turn and then go to Lakeport. If you look at, at North High Street, it does not line up with the rest of High Street. Okay. There is a sign there that says, do not enter. Notice tonight it's been hit again. It's bent. Okay. Wrong-way drivers. You've never seen a wrong-way driver. We have a black pickup in town that he comes down that road wrong way numerous times. Stan counted him three times one day. I stood there and gasped and he came down the street the wrong way towing a cargo trailer. He comes down and turns without stopping and going out 11th Street. Waiting for an accident to happen. It's going to happen. The things that we recommended, the spike strips and all that, you know, then none of that's going to work. Stan's a retired highway patrolman and he said that they do make a speed bump that is straight at one side and angled at the other side. Where if those are put in, the traffic that's going the wrong way is going to hit it. And they're going to know they're going the wrong way. Tourists, they may not know in the summertime that they're going the wrong way. But they come down that street at a high rate of speed. We've watched them fly past. They miss the barricade, but they fly past our house, don't even slow down at 11th Street and just keep right on going. And somebody's going to get hit on 11th Street eventually. You didn't have any reports of accidents. In 47 years, I would say 10 times they've gone through that barricade. One of them was the Air Force recruiter guy, middle of the day. He drove right straight through the barricade. You know, we've had stolen autos through the barricade. As far as accidents at that intersection, I'm not aware of any of them. I don't know what the answer is. Since I last came to the city council meeting, I have seen three police cars on our street. I think the only answer is enforcement. It doesn't do any good for us to call because by the time we call, they're gone and we can't get a license number. You know, I don't know what the answer is. It's just that I hope, you know, something can be done. Stan said that twice he has come down that street the wrong way when they were doing work on the road and the road was closed at Clear Lake and 11th Street, I mean, High and 11th Street. Once he was, when he was on patrol, he came home for dinner and he went to pull out from, the pickup was parked here and the patrol car was parked here. He went to pull out to go and almost got hit on by a carload of teenagers that were coming around the street the wrong way. Fortunately, all they got was a ticket, you know. I don't know what the answer is short of enforcement, and I don't know how you're going to enforce it. Because, you know, I don't know what the answer is. But there is this one black pickup that, I don't know who it is or anything, but he comes flying down the street the wrong way a lot of the times. And if you're turning off of 11th Street, you're not going to expect anything to come. And you were asking about, when did it become a one-way street? Our neighbors have been here probably 55 years. They went to the city council. They came to the city council to get it made into a one-way street because there was no parking. You know, there was no place that they could park. So I know it was that way when we moved in 47 years ago and they've been there 55. So it's been like that for, at least that length of time. The other thing is it's narrow enough that the semis, when they come around the street, drive up on the sidewalk to make that turn. And as far as how much traffic goes down the road, on a school morning, I can stand at my kitchen window and watch this traffic lot stopped on 11th Street waiting for the people to go, rather than going down the Main Street and going that way. They can't go because the people that went to school 15 minutes earlier are coming back. So that's all I have to say. Can I answer any questions? Can I answer any questions?
I, I do have one, if I may. Yeah. It sounds like primarily, at least as of late, it's been one pickup truck or, or one person?
No, no, no.
So it's, it's all.
Three or four a day. It's daily.
So not just this one particular?
This one truck is a, he's very loud.
Yeah.
Oh, that was another thing, you know. Noise, the speed and the noise. There is a law about exhaust. And my husband would really like to see some enforcement on the noise because it's, it's very loud. We can hear them come down our street and go all the way to the freeway. We can hear them. But it's not just the black pickup. The black pickup is a real problem. And we don't know who it is and he goes so fast, we can't tell.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Ruby, can I ask, just generally, off the top of your head, how, how many times a week or how many times a month? Let's go with a week. How many times a week do you think somebody goes the wrong way on that street?
Two or three times a day.
Two or three times a day. So.
14 to 21.
Yeah, thank you for the math there.
Yeah. We got 90-year-old living next door. We're old. You know, we have to back out of our driveway. We have to look every direction. But we got a little two-year-old living across the street now and we're, we're really worried about him because, well, I also noticed on here, who's this? Mr. Nguyen is talking about that street and the, like a sidewalks, that the people, there's, there's sidewalks and then there's none, there's sidewalks and then there's none. Some people walk on the sidewalk and then cross and get over the, over here. The majority of people just walk in the middle of the road. You know, I don't know why, you know, we watch them. I don't know why they don't use the sidewalks that are there. But if there's a wrong-way driver coming, you know, also I have seen wrong-way drivers force the traffic going north over into the turn lane. I mean, the parking lane that they have there. We call them the racing stripes because people go down the street so fast.
I appreciate you coming tonight and I appreciate that you've been here before. Do, do you feel like that we're continuing to work on it?
Well, like Kevin said, the only thing I can think of is enforcement and I don't know how you're going to do it.
We're going to keep working on it.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you listening to us and so do all the eight people that live on the street.
Thank you.
For the record, I like it noted that I do drive a black pickup truck, but that is not.
We were going to ask Kevin.
Dare. I was going to wait, but we weren't recording to ask you then.
Uh, anybody else from the public?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Hi, I hope all of you maybe had a chance to look at it. I know you had a closed action item before. I'd be happy to read it for you if, if someone hasn't, or I just.
I don't think that's necessary. Can you, can you touch on the things that are important to you?
Yeah. I mean, I think obviously this is something that like touches every single one of us. It's also not just a Lakeport problem. This is actually a national problem. And I think I'm, I'm really glad that sort of traffic safety is getting national attention. I also finding out that Lakeport and High Street used to be a highway just explains so much more because oftentimes highways are not good places for pedestrians. And I think that establishing a committee, I certainly would apply if it's needed, but I think, you know, there might be enough people to populate that. I know that we've had both a traffic safety advisory committee and a parks and rec advisory committee before. I think that populating, you know, 10 people for a committee might be harder than just five. I also think that these things are also inextricably linked together. And I think to, to one point about the lack of accidents at High Street and, and Clear Lake Avenue is that even though there's no accident data on that intersection, the most, the next highest, or the highest intersection that's prone to these accidents is 11th and Forbes. So we haven't really addressed the problem. We've just moved it literally over one block. Same thing exists in the Forbes and 11th thing where we don't have that pedestrian infrastructure. And I think that it would be extremely beneficial to give people just a little bit of creative resources, just a little bit of access to Ron Ladd and, and his infinite wisdom of, of this, the street codes. And I think we're really under utilizing the different tools. Enforcement is not the strongest player in, in getting safe streets. A lot of it comes down to built environment and road design. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you might have. But I think that, like I've said, I think I said previous, there's a lot of these problem intersections. Forbes and Martin comes to mind, intersection of Lakeport Boulevard and Main Street comes to mind. Obviously with the new courthouse, that comes to mind. And then just general pedestrian access to the southern, southern part of the city is also very limited with Martin and Main. And then I, I added some details about our water courses and Forbes. And there's public space involved in those areas too. And I know we've had, you know, a history of homeless, people experiencing homelessness in, you know, areas adjacent to these things. You know, we're, we still have people experiencing homelessness adjacent to the park now, even though they might have been displaced from the shoreline, they're still out there. And additionally, I think that, you know, there's, there's some obvious safety concerns with traffic just directly adjacent to the park. One thing that I didn't include in here was that on, I believe, Sunday, a 16-year-old was hit on their bicycle crossing from Fifth to Main, I'm assuming to go to the park. And they, they're fine. They road rash, but they, I don't think that this is going to be the last time we see this. And I think the summer is going to have a lot more pedestrians than the inclement weather we've had now. So if you have any specific questions or any resources I might point you towards to maybe start thinking about things, This discussion that you guys have had has been really awesome to see how you're all like taking individual approaches to possibly fix this. Um, and I just, I really appreciated the conversation and I hope there's more specifically like this and I hope we get a lot more time uh, to do that because people are figuring out that there's you can talk a little bit, but you know, getting out and just putting up some, some barrels and cones actually goes a long way for, for traffic safety.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Danny? So, the city is kicking off a sidewalk survey in conjunction with Civic Well and Blue Zones. We're just at the initial process. And actually, we're looking for people that have time and are willing to donate some of the input that, that you've given us tonight. Uh, I mean, it is definitely a funding issue. The, the study that we're doing is the first step uh, that's needed to acquire the funding. And, I mean, it would involve ranking and prioritizing um, the different areas of pedestrian improvements that would most benefit the city and kind of tell us in which order we should go after them and we would love to have your, your input through that process.
Thank you. Yeah, the Blue Zones group is um, is very um, tangential to some of the organizations that I follow. Um, they, I don't believe Greg Dameron is, Greg Damon is their um, policy guy, I believe. Um, I don't know if he specifically has experience with sort of street design, but I know there are people in the Greater Blue Zones organization, maybe not here, but elsewhere that would be willing to come contribute. But yeah, I've already actually started cataloging some of the areas that don't have sidewalks, that we have problem intersections that, you know, don't line up. Just collecting them with pictures and Google Maps and just taking notes. So I've kind of already got a a, a little, a little database, very amateur, very rough, but um, yeah, I'd be, I'd be pleased to help out with that. But I, I also think that, um, you know, just giving a few um, a few determined citizens, just some really just traffic cones, you know, what's in the back of the utility truck could also go a really long way, you know, even if it's just for a weekend when we know there's gonna be busy traffic, you send them out there, you go watch how people behave when you put up a pop-up roundabout on Eleventh and Forbes and you take away the right-hand slip lanes and you just see what happens for a weekend. Don't necessarily need CICA, you just treat it as a construction, same way you would do a construction project, use the California Temporary Traffic Control Handbook. And um, I'd be really excited to do some different projects like that.
What's, what's, what's the official term on that? Is it guerrilla, um, guerrilla?
Tactical urbanism.
Tactical urbanism, yes, yes.
Does someone have your contact info here?
Yeah, so it's at the end of this, um, I'm in some email um, things, but
We'll, we'll get ahold of you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I'll, I'll give him, I'll give him points right off the bat for, it's not a typo there that he's gotten his first one. Strode is a real term.
Which is funny because my Nana actually, uh, when she was reading this, she was like, do you want me to mark this up? I see a typo. I was like, Nana, it's not a typo.
That's a term.
And if any of you would like to know what a strode is, I'd be happy to explain.
Yeah, I hope you reach out to me for that because I like new words. So I don't know that one. And I just want to say, you know, I'm really, uh, I, I'm really glad, I'm excited when you come and then I like that kind of energy and we love to hear from people. And I totally appreciate Ron, you know, already giving you something that you can hook onto if that is, interests you. And you know, you can always the, the context of the city council meetings is limited, even though we're pretty relaxed here, but it's limited. And so you can always reach out to any one of us individually with your ideas, with your thoughts, things you want to talk about at length and you know, city staff is pretty welcoming as well. So thank you for that.
City staff is pretty welcome. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, even though my energy is a little shaky. I am excited about these things. I'm excited for positive growth. So, yeah, thank you, guys.
There's, Mr. Mayor, there's not anything on this list that isn't in our, our list. I mean,
No, I, I, I recognize.
It, it, uh, yeah, the, the, the biggest issue there is the funding aspect. The good news is, most of these things, you know, that complete street concept and uh, kind of, you know, kind of um, some of those aspects of a strode. Um, you know, kind of defining a street being something that you use regularly for multiple different activities, walking to the park, bicycling, doing that. And a road being more kind of like how you picture a highway. Um, and a strode is kind of when you observe a roadway that seems to be having an identity crisis between the two. Um, which you can observe. Once you, once you start to see, you can completely observe. And as I'm sure the epiphany that that Mr. Nguyen just already had, you know, knowing that that used to be the highway before, it becomes very clear that a good portion of the roads and throughout Lakeport are strodes and they're, they're in a bit of an identity crisis. Um, the hot scotch of a sidewalk segment here and there is something that we all, you know, bang our heads against on a regular basis. Um, so I mean, but going back, the good news is a lot of the funding aspects that are available through Caltrans and other things have complete streets, concepts at their heart. And uh, that really is uh, what we're trying to accomplish with this initial planning stage project is to get ourselves positioned to take advantage of some of those. Do more projects like what we did complete up there on Hartley and stuff. And so a lot of these are are exactly where we're trying, where we're trying to go. And some of them, we are, I would say we're making um, good progress on, um, specifically Eleventh Street, um, Main Street and Lakeport Boulevard. In some of those projects that are coming forward, we do have enhanced uh, lighted crossings proposed to those. Those aren't full fixes. I mean, as, as uh, Danny shows in here, I mean, that's just one aspect of it. Um, you know, the ADA curb ramps to serve it, bicycle lanes, you know, connected bicycle lanes, connected sidewalks, all come up to pieces of it too. So we're aware of those, of those aspects, but we're, we're trying to kind of eat that elephant one bite at a time.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, we're still in public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would, still hasn't spoke tonight? Not seeing anybody here in the room. Nick, do we have anybody online?
Uh, seeing no hands raised online.
Great, thank you. I want to bring this back to council. I believe this, was this an action item? This is receiving file.
If there's any other action that you want in regards to um, the one-way um, you know, piece, I'm
Secure grants. That's what I would recommend.
Uh, we, and we do have some of the framework in place for that. I mean, that was one of the purposes of that Eleventh Street corridor study, which this area is certainly a part of. Um, but uh, yeah, unfortunately I don't have a readily available quick fix.
I think somebody should go undercover and find that black pickup truck.
Yes, yes, very much so.
Felony wrong-way driving.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to add that, um, even if our roads were perfect, I am with Ruby with just a frustration with some of the drivers. Um, never seen so many drivers behaving badly. Even one of, one of my coworkers, we went to lunch and I said, did you just do a U-turn on Main Street? And she goes, yeah, there was a parking spot over there. It was easy. And I said, and illegal, like what are you doing? But I see that constantly. And um, we could make everything perfect, but we still seem to have these drivers that are doing whatever.
It's getting worse.
Same thing with pedestrians. They're either not using their crosswalk or they're not pushing the button for the light. And for the kids for this summer, it would be nice if maybe we'll, we'll be able to coordinate something with one of our groups to do an education piece for the kids in the park, maybe. Um, bribe them to come with some prizes and teach them how, you know, remind them how to use the streets and the sidewalks safely to walk and bike.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I'll make the last comment about the streets in the city of Lakeport. Um, I'd like to remind everybody that we have a lake on the east side of us. We have a highway that came later and, and cut off our city in a very strange way. We have hills and we are stuck with uh, an infrastructure that was handed to us and all, all we can do at a time like this is try to mitigate the troubles that we continue to have the best that we can and, and uh, and we continue to try to do that. So.
Yep, and, and we, and we will.
Yeah. How many times a year do you bring this to us, Kevin?
We've been bringing it twice a year. Um, I mean, and speaking to that point, I mean, we do have um, on our agenda planning calendar that I uh, bringing, because we, if you recall, we did suspend TSAC, Traffic Safety Advisory Council, and then uh, the Parks and Rec Commission um, a few years ago because of staffing uh, your related areas and, you know, focusing on the park and some of these other projects. I mean, so we do have it on our near-term agenda to bring that topic back to you guys to consider how you want uh, to move forward with that. I mean, one idea would be to combine both or you could have separate committees or we can continue functioning in, in this direction where we're bringing these items to you, kind of on a biannual basis. Regardless, I think the most constructive thing that we've done is quarterly review these, we gather these traffic safety-related complaints, a more formal aspect, and then we review them for trends. And I mean, I think that's been very assistive to helping us direct the limited resources that we do have to make sure that we are getting the most out of uh, you know, that we're actually hitting the, the areas in the, in a strategic fashion.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. And thank you, Ron. As uh, Councilmember Costa pointed out, we appreciate the history that you tried to bring there for us, that intersection. Uh, High Street has a High Street has a, a, it's like a drag strip and, and the houses on each end of it seem to get hit by cars. So uh, I'm sure that doesn't go into the traffic safety data there, but, but uh, it continues to be a problem. Moving on, uh, item six B. Uh, communications update, receive an update uh, on the two thousand and twenty-three communication team activity. Would that be?
It's gonna be me this evening. Kelly is um, on an in route or just newly got there. She's attending uh, the Risk Management Conference uh, this week. Um, so I will give just a quick update. This is really just a quick kind of annual um, update. If you recall, a few years back, we, we did put together a more uh, concerted effort, very similar to the traffic safety-related aspect where um, key staff is getting together on a monthly basis and reviewing what projects, what aspects, what things are going on and kind of developing a communication strategy from there to try and kind of uh, put our efforts together. Um, I think we have done really well um, in getting that information out, but I will also say that we're probably at the maximum of what we can do under that system. Uh, so I bring this back to kind of, you know, just kind of do a check-in with your council. Is the communication um, kind of aspects that are coming out of the city um, meeting uh, the goals of the community and your council? Um, if, if it's something that um, either we feel that it's not or we would like to take it to the next level, my, my recommendation is that that be something that we do look at and consider um, at a budget time. That um, you know, we do not have a, a staff person that is specifically dedicated to communications. That doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be a full-time position. It could be something that we consult out. We've seen some of our neighboring cities. Um, you recently embark in more, you know, kind of uh, a PR consultant thing to kind of help bolster their communication efforts. Um, so this is really just sort of a check-in. Um, we get together monthly, we review the projects that we have, we kind of take toll of what's out there, uh, kind of do some rumor control and make sure that um, if there's something that we're missing in the communication pattern, we try and get something out. Um, you know, Brad does an excellent job with his side on a more regular basis. Uh, getting information out. It's also uh, the same folks that are involved in any emergency related items. And a lot of the stuff that we do is just kind of capturing what's already going on in the community and sharing that information. So, uh, you know, I would say, you know, probably fifty percent of it's our own content. Um, it's using Everbridge, formerly Nixle. It's using, you know, it's the city's social media pages. It's using um, our webpage. It's all across the board. Um, and so we try and each, everybody's kind of responsible for a little area. So getting together once a month has been immensely helpful to coordinating that effort and making sure that that information is getting out in the, the most coordinated way, fashion. I'm just saying that if we want to take it to the next step, we've probably maximized what we can do um, with the staff that we have because those folks have other duties. And so, you know, there's only so much they can throw at the, these communication pieces. So it's really just a check-in. But um, also, if it's something that we think we need to enhance or take to the next level, then we'll definitely want to give some consideration to it as we move forward into our goals planning session for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you, Kevin. I don't see questions from council.
How many staff hours would you estimate goes into this work, weekly or monthly?
I, I don't know that we've, we've fully quantified that. I mean, I think there's certain folks that do more. Uh, Brad. Um, Andrew Britton in our Public Works Department who also, you know, wears a separate hat of, you know, managing the city's um, you know, social media pages as well. Hillary on the website uh, side. And then Wilda, um, Shock on our economic development side, getting it out to some of our, you know, other key pieces, all kind of uh, you do that on a more consistent basis. And then you have other folks, you know, mostly department heads. Um, myself who are, you know, putting some other content and messaging together on um, you know, a less frequent basis. So it's, it's hard to quantify. Um, but that's, but that's sort of the problem is it's so diffuse across the entire city organization right now that there's not one person really uh, you know, responsible for the overall content of it.
Just seems like if we wanted to consider how to staff that, other than the way it is now, we're gonna need to kind of get a starting point, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think there are, there are a couple of different ways you could do it. One, you know, that communications team can still continue to operate and can probably identify one or two things each month that maybe goes out to, you know, a, a PR firm or something to develop a higher level content. Um, you know, we could consider, you know, a summer internship or something like that and just see what kind of process or what kind of product we can get out of that. And if that's, you know, if that's a worth it, you know, the, you're talking twenty hours a week and kind of gauge from there. So I mean, there's a couple of different directions we can go. And we can do a little better job at trying to quantify the hours that are in there.
Thank you.
What about, if I may, um, besides just staff hours, what's the, the feeling amongst the staff? Is it a big drag on staff to, to be putting together posts and, and outreach, whether it's Nixle or, or, you know, the new platform? How, how is it going staff-wise?
I, I think it, it, it probably depends. It's both. It's, you know, I think sometimes it's really exciting, especially when you're working on things like the park and you're, you know, putting things like on that out. But other efforts, I think we've all kind of shared grumbles that, you know, man, you know, twenty or thirty years ago, this was easy. You just sent one press release to the Record B. And boom, you were done. Now we're, we're having to match content across several different. And this isn't just us. This is a this is an issue that every city's dealing with. It's what every marketer's dealing with. So yeah, there is, there's a little bit of a kind of a a, a burden.
So either
To that, but
Going outside for uh, another firm or hiring somebody to handle all of uh, the outreach, would that alleviate department heads and, and chief and everybody's staff? Take a big weight off your shoulders? Or is it like, yeah, I just do a little bit here and there and we all kind of chip in to get it done?
No, I think the, the, the easy answer to that is yes, it, it, it would take a large burden and then you would be freeing up people's time to go other ways. But I think the problem becomes, how do you balance that against some of the other priorities that your council has? Because, you know, we, we've got a limited, limited number of resources we have. I mean, if this is working, I um, and we are getting our message out in a consistent and positive fashion, then I think we're all committed to continuing to do that. I just think if, if the thought is that it's not, or we want something higher, then it's something we're gonna have to consider that that kind of is gonna require a bit more of a, kind of a, a capacity change um, from what we're doing. But yeah, you're gonna have to balance that against um, your other priorities.
Yeah. Thank you. Do the department heads still have to put out the content in the press release to someone else that's gonna now put it on social media?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we all develop our own content for the most part.
So you're, you're, you're not taking a hundred percent of the work off of the department heads?
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Um, well, I mean, a lot of it, a lot of it does come, I mean, you know, it, it comes directly from a staff report. I mean, it's not like it's, it's something that's completely beyond what we're already doing. It's just trying to, it's another step in the process. Um, but it's not something that necessarily you're doing on a, you, you know, from scratch. I mean, a lot of, like for instance, when we were doing a lot of the park stuff, we were out there taking pictures of that stuff anyways. We were writing reports anyway, so it wasn't but it was an extra step, a different deviation to make sure that we were getting that message out to the public.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
If I just, one thing, it it seems to me that you made a quantum leap here from, you know, the outreach in twenty-two to twenty-three. And um, as you mentioned, you know, then then you start talking about cost benefit ratio and, you know, what what and taking away from other things that we need to do. It looks like you made a great leap in what's done, and the chief is always talking about his side. I mean, I don't see if it ain't broke, don't fix it kind of thing. I think we're in a good place and until we get like you know, influx of huge amounts of of revenue, I I think you're doing a great job with what you have, and I and I like the status quo.
I guess one thing I did fail to mention, the big elephant is the room, is some of our biggest players. Brad and Andrew are both retiring um, here in the near future. So I mean.
Should have left that.
Should I have led with that one? No, but I mean, I, the the model is there. They've they've certainly have left us in 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 a position uh, you know, to to pick those pieces up, but there's gonna be there's gonna be changes on on how that's gonna go. And and I think some of that is, you know, are you gonna expect a new chief or a new compliance officer to to handle this? So I mean, there's gonna be balancing effort that we're gonna have to do on our side, but the model is working. It's just, I I just want to be honest that I don't know how much more it can go um, at its current rate. I mean, it it can it can stay level, but I don't know if we can, we can jump to that next level, but if if that's not warranted at this time, we can keep doing this and we'll keep visiting it. You annually and and seeing if it's not working, we can look at different direction.
Well, I love that idea, though, if if you you threw out one creative idea like a, an internship kind of a position. So I don't know if you're ready to start thinking about those things now, or is that part of our next conversations about it, but that type thing might be worth at least figuring out. Is there a place for this? Because that would not be a big investment in and from the budget.
I, and I also would be remiss to say that I think the demands for more communication is just gonna increase, and and that's okay. I mean, that's what we're in the business of doing is being transparent and we we perform public services and it's very important that the public understand what it is that we're doing and be informed by it. So I mean, it's a natural it's a natural piece of the local government setting, but it is constantly changing and I do see that demand increasing.
Let's open it up to the public. Are there any questions from the public or comments?
Yeah.
Not hearing any in the room. Nick, do we have anybody online with their hands raised?
No hands raised online.
Great, thank you. Bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Receive and file.
You're receiving file. Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna make some comments. Um, I think we have just been so lucky to have um, the amount of post postings and information going out with the staff that we had, you know, we just were really lucky to have them and chief and hopefully he's training some other people to take over for him, because yeah, I do think that'll be our biggest challenge. And Andrew does, they've both done such a great job. Um, so thank you. And then ultimately, you know, it'd be great to have a PR firm and, you know, kind of really come up with the identity of the city and a whole marketing plan for the city and uh, PR department and a Parks and Rec Department and we can dream, right? But for now, we're doing great. Yeah.
Yeah, the the want list is long.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, that was a receive and file. Moving on to uh, six C. Public Works Director, we've got uh, receive an update on the Forbes Creek headwall and Hartley Street culvert environmental report projects.
Thank you, Mayor Froyo, council. I'm really excited to give this information. This is the fascinating topic of the dynamic nature of federal funding and the inevitable contract amendments that go hand in hand with federal funding. So I feel like I gave at least thirty percent of this update at the special meeting for the disaster declaration, so I will try not to be redundant and and be more specific on the nature of federal funding when it's associated with a road is that the the funding originates at the US DOT Federal Highway and it's passed to Caltrans and the federal agency passes the federal requirements to Caltrans and Caltrans polices us basically to ensure that we stay in compliance with the federal requirements of the federal money. So the first problem that we encountered on this project was we do not have staff, sufficient staff to meet the federal requirements. So we hire a consultant who is an expert in complying with the onerous requirements dictated to us by the feds and we couldn't find a consultant that was interested in bidding on these projects because in the public works world, they're relatively small items.
Big projects to us, but.
They're huge projects to us, but in the public works world statewide, they're 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 relatively small contracts. So we had an incredibly difficult time selecting or or getting a bid, one bid. We finally got one bid, which we can award to a sole bidder, but since we only got one, it opened a whole nother Pandora's box that we had to fulfill and prove that we had done our due diligence in publicly advertising this and that we had checked all the boxes so that we could then be reimbursed for this consultant's time. If we skip a step, we would lose the funding for reimbursement for this consultant. The consultant takes a look at the project and works closely with staff to get a conceptual idea of what the design will be for these two projects. And they take that information and they do their best to provide a scope that they feel would cover the entire project. So a- as we go through that process, and you can only do one thing at a time, the first step is the environmental. And it required CEQA and NEPA, which are it's a tough hill to climb to meet everything they ask to have a successful environmental document when you're dealing with NEPA. So as we go through this, the consultant compiles the environmental reports that they feel would be required for an approval of the environmental document, and they submit those out to several agencies. California Fishing Game, the Water Board, Army Corps of Engineers, uh, whoever is on the list through the consultants experience and expertise that this would get distributed out to. Each one of them, each one of these agencies on their own time schedule reviews the documents and they may be happy with the reports that are submitted, but often they require additional reports that the consultant may or may not agree with. It was necessary, but nevertheless, now we have to produce it. The additional report would then be outside the scope of the original contract that we have with them. And that's how we get into an amendment. I would also like to point out that often the review by each one of these agencies takes so long that the regulations have changed by the time we've submitted it until the time they've reviewed it. And that can also create the scenario to require an additional report, which would require a contract amendment. Now, there are avenues for us to then reapply for additional funds to Caltrans that will then submit it back up to the feds. So there is an avenue for us to recover the funds for these amendments, but that also takes an incredible amount of paperwork and time for the state first to review it on their own schedule and subsequently the feds. So this is the reason that Forbes Creek and Hartley are taking so long, and we have applied for the additional funding on the amendments that are listed in the staff report. But as this goes on and we get these, I don't know that they're small amendments, they're not huge amendments, but they start to build up. And what we cannot apply for and what is not budgeted for is every time there's an amendment, there's an additional eleven point four seven percent match that the city is then on the hook for. And so as these were going along and and Kevin and Nick and I worked together close on these and figure out how we're gonna get them paid for and budgeted. And uh, we all felt that it was important that we bring this to council in an information piece so that we didn't, weren't in a position somewhere later where we have all these contracts amendments that you know, the first couple were in the city manager's authority to sign for, but we just thought it would be a good idea to bring this out as information and I would take my best swing at explaining that process and and just let everyone be aware that this, you know, the eleven point four seven, the eleven point four seven percent continues to increase with each one of these. And this is separate from the avenue we're investigating to put Hartley back into emergency repair out of the permanent repair. This is just, this is just the natural state of the process that we would go through anytime that federal funds are involved in a federal highway pass through to Caltrans. And so that was the nature of this report is to just make council aware of the amendments and how that adds up on our percentage of match.
Yeah, I mean, and that that was that was sort of the the big picture item that we wanted to bring forward to you guys is that when these projects first came about following the flooding in two thousand and nineteen, uh, the prices that we were looking at are quite different than where they are now. And eleven point four seven percent on what those prices are is a completely different number of where we're at with eleven point four there. Um, however, I mean, these are problems that are not going to go away and they're not going to get any cheaper. But really, we just wanted to daylight this out and make sure that council was aware that, you know, why am I still seeing, you know, the barriers out there by Forbes Creek at Main Street? Why is, why are those plates still over the top of Hartley? I mean, I think it's important to understand that these these pieces are going on, what they mean, where we're at in the process. They will eventually get there. It's just, it's really difficult for us to give you a straight answer of how much it's actually gonna cost because it keeps changing. And like, like Ron said, they keep kind of, it feels like they keep moving the ball on us. I mean, one of the biggest surprises that we got hit with is uh, the cost that they want us to secure temporary construction right away is astronomical. It not, not permanent right away, but just right away that will be using temporarily while we do the construction. They have a formula of what that costs and it's it's astronomical. It adds, it adds huge percentages to it, but it's part of that federal process. If we want any federal monies, we have to adhere to all those pieces. It's sort of an all or nothing uh, kind of piece, and that's, you know, and it's it's difficult. And in the agency's defense, you know, they they can't give us the whole picture until you finish this step and that gives you, you know, what it is that you're up against. They can't answer all those questions until they get that and then you, okay, now like like Ron said, oh, you've got this going on, so now you have to do this eight step NEPA process uh, to mitigate for that effort. Well, that eight step mitigation process adds additional cost and probably more uh, issue is the additional time that it puts in. And so we keep hitting these different things. So just wanted council to be kind of aware of where we're at and uh, why these things are, one, taking so long and two, why the costs keep going up? And that, and you see a lot of jurisdictions will throw in the towel and just say we don't want anything to do with federal money. I mean, and that's where some of these just jurisdictions get to that point.
And once you get started, you're pot committed.
Well, I mean, you are. I mean, we're we're committed. I mean, we're obviously gonna have to pay for the work that's already done, but I mean, if council says, you know, stop, we'll just figure out a different way, then um, you know, we still have these half completed projects. That's not my recommendation. I just think that it's, you know, that eleven point four seven percent just keeps getting bigger and we don't have a very large pot to begin with, and so it starts to eat away at other projects. But letting Hartley deteriorate is just gonna cost us more money. Letting the bank continue to erode up Forbes Creek is just gonna cost more money, but I I think it was just what we really wanted to accomplish tonight was just give you an update and an overview, and I wish we had better answers. I wish I could give you a definitive timeline and I wish I could give you a definitive price, but we can't.
Appreciate you guys, you know, explaining all that and and um, bringing it up to the, to our attention so we could understand it. And I think in the end, kind of like you've touched on either it's still a benefit to get the federal funds and so long as that's true and this is what they make, this is what they require. We're just sort of stuck in it and that it costs what it costs, right?
And I think that's where we are. I'm, I don't think we're making a recommendation. We still don't think that it's a benefit. I just, it's it's taking more time and resources than we thought. Yeah. Putting a few more gray hairs in our head.
Yeah, it sounds annoying, Ron.
It's a fascinating process.
Straightforward too, yeah.
All right, um, I'd like to open this up to the public. Any questions or comments? Not seeing anybody jumping up to the podium. Uh, do we have anybody online, Nick, with their hands?
Seeing no hands raised online.
All right, uh, let's uh, bring it back to council. Last comment, receive and file. Think we're done.
Good job, Ron.
Phew, thank you, Ron. Hey, so you just, you just made your explanation, so when you come back asking for more money, you'll say, do you remember that night I told you?
See, I knew one of them would catch on.
Okay. Um, moving along to uh, city council communications, Ron, would you like to start with that?
Thank you, Mayor Froyo. Nothing further.
Nothing, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Nothing to report.
Assistant City Manager?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
City Manager?
You skip over David?
Well, no, I can go back.
I would, I would just say, uh, you know, uh, once again, uh, we survived another onslaught of storms and kudos to um, you know, both our public work staff and PD staff who were out there a little less damaged than the last time. However, um, we're being very uh, strategic in uh, in going to the areas that we know that are first to flood. Uh, you know, we put some road closure signs out on some areas of Esplanade and the lowest lands there. Um, we're getting, we're getting to that point. I think the lake is at about eight. Um, we probably have in our arsenal the ability to take on one more of those storms and after that we're, we're just in, we're at the mercy of of the lake. So we're doing all the stuff that we can do um, ahead of time, uh, checking the systems, making sure that we're, uh, you're not overwhelming some of our items, but um, at the end of the day, if I could change the weather, I wouldn't be here.
Okay, interesting comment. Uh, City Attorney, Dave?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the council, I did send you the amicus brief that um, our firm filed on behalf of the league and a number of other um, local government um, agencies related to the California Business Roundtable case. So that case is now fully briefed before the California Supreme Court. So at this point, I think we just, we're just waiting for them to set oral argument. And but it 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 will get adjudicated prior to having to publish the pamphlets, the ballots for the November election. So that's where that stands. Um, since I wasn't here last time, I can update you. I'm a member of the cannabis uh, regulatory committee for the, for the city attorney's department and we're update, we just finished our draft update of the seed to sale, which is the league's um, guide on cannabis regulation. So hopefully we'll get that thing out soon. Um, and I believe that's about all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Regina?
Uh, nothing to report.
Councilmember Disney?
Yes, um, as a new member to the Lake
Yes. As a new member to the Lakeport Main Street Association, they had their meeting last night. And the only thing really to, to report out of that is March 29th, they're sponsoring a free movie at the Soper East. It's going to be Toy Story. And so come, come watch the movie March 29th. And that's it.
Councilmember Perlet?
No report.
Pro Tim Costa?
No report.
And no report for myself tonight. This meeting is adjourned.